Good evening, Holliston. Welcome to the March 24th Select Board Meeting. We've got started promptly at 7:01 now. Welcome to everyone. This evening, we have some very special guests here that we're going to invite to the table in a moment, that being Senate President Karen Spilka and our State Representative, James Arena DeRosa. But before we get to that, we're going to invite up Bobby Blair, who has a donation to the town of Holliston that he'd like to present to the board tonight. Good evening, Bobby.
How are you?
Good, good.
Nice to see you.
Thank you. I came up with the brainy idea that we needed a Betsy Ross flag out front, and I jumped the gun and checked with Donna Mazzi. She says, "Four by six, right?" And I says, "Yeah." So I sent away, and I got it. And then, days later, she told me, well, Chief Cassidy, who I guess is in charge of the flags, said, "Wrong size." So Murphy's Law, whatever can go wrong, will.
Sure.
And did.
Okay.
That flag's not supposed to show up till tomorrow.
Okay.
So in the meantime, here's your Betsy Ross flag.
Thank you very much.
You can give that to the chief, and he can find another flagpole in town.
Will do.
To put it on. This is awareness of the shot heard around the world, which is in two or three weeks here. And we will be having a gathering out front on April 19, 7 o'clock in the morning, and that's when the engagement happened in Lexington, to be a flag-raising with the right-sized flag, floral tribute, speeches. James has signaled that he will be there. Joanne Hobbit will give a little rundown of Holliston's part in the revolution. Caps, firing squad, and then coffee and donuts inside here afterwards.
Great.
I don't know if anybody was aware, but the legislature has $2 million available for next year's funding. Is that true?
For the 250th?
For the tour, yeah.
Bobby, if you say it so, it's so.
We believe you.
We'll make it so.
And the deadline, I don't think anybody was aware of it. I don't think the town put in for it. I asked Celebrate Holliston, their meeting on Wednesday night. We came up with a few ideas for next year, maybe a concert.
Okay.
With each song dedicated to a little episode in Holliston's Revolutionary War. Maybe a bus tour to some of the old cemeteries, something I'd like to see, and they stressed this in the application for funding, for next year's funds, lesser-known facts. And I don't think enough people know that Holliston was the home to Paul Revere's family during the revolution. And we have it right in Liz Green Deal's records.
Okay.
Actually, I went through them, and we couldn't find, it was right on top. We looked at it three times. There it was, sitting right there, something like that. Also Staples Chamberlain, who was the town moderator back then. He went from here to Boston on April 19, 250 years ago. He made a foray to Ticonderoga. He made two trips down to Newport for a suspected British invasion. And at 50 years of age, and I can't imagine this, each city in town in Massachusetts was required to have stockings, breeches, a shirt, whatnot for their men in the Continental Congress. He left here in late January, went to Albany, New York, dropped off supplies for seven or eight Holliston men, and then he went to Valley Forge and dropped off the rest. And then he came back here in time to moderate the first town meeting in March.
Okay.
There was no Days Inn, no heater in the buckboard, no radio to listen to. He's a hero in my eyes.
Sure.
So maybe if we can, I don't know, a monument or something to this poor soul. He's buried up and go and drive, right in back of his brother Enoch, who was a suspected Tory. But Enoch did go on a few of these things. So if either Damon or Ben would like to say a few words on April 19 out here, if you're up that early, you're welcome to come along.
Thank you, Bobby.
Okay.
And thank you for keeping the focus on, keeping the history here in Holliston very much alive.
Well, it's right here.
That's right.
I mean, you know.
And thank you for keeping the focus on the 250th, which is right around the corner.
Yeah, it is.
So I appreciate your efforts and work, and it's with gratitude that we accept this flag and the other flag to come tomorrow.
Okay.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thanks, Bobby.
Bobby, thank you.
All right. We will move on with our agenda to invite to the table Senate President Karen Spilka and James Arena DeRosa, who have some updates for us, and I'm sure will receive a few comments from the Select Board. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Very good. How are you, Madam President?
Doing well, thank you.
Rep. Arena DeRosa.
As well as can be expected with what's going on around us all.
Yes. And you don't mean the weather, just?
No, unfortunately. I wish it was just the weather.
Although the weather.
But, yeah.
Well, welcome. We're grateful to have both of you here tonight. We try to do this on an annual basis, and we're very appreciative of your schedules allowing both of you to come to spend this time with us tonight. We generally, and we could do it any way you'd like, Madam President, but we generally ask for updates from you, and then you may have a couple of questions or comments.
Sure.
More so, I suppose, from the board. And if it's okay with you, we have the Finance Committee here. The Chair, I believe, is on the call, as well as maybe a member of the School Committee to join us. And if it's okay with you, I might-
Of course.
-ask them if they have anything they'd like to add.
Of course.
But please, Madam President.
And we'll answer whatever we can.
Yes, of course.
Yes, yes. Thank you so much for having you, having us, Tina, Ben, Damon, Kathy. It's great to see you, Kathleen. We always love coming here, and I don't normally speak on behalf of my colleague, but this is a time that's really great for us to hear your concerns, hear your issues, for us to update you as much as we can. And I know you usually do have some of the school personnel, the School Committee, Finance Committee, and it's good to hear from them as well. Do you want to comment that it's great to see you here? I don't know if all of you realize Kathleen was, at one point, a Senate staffer.
Oh.
So, yes, yes. So, good choice.
What advice about your background?
Good choice, good choice.
We feel in very good hands right now.
Yes, 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 definitely. And I want to publicly thank my partner in advocating for Holliston, who does a great job in the House, and we work really well together. That doesn't always happen, I have to say, between House and Senate, and it's a pleasure to work with James Arena DeRosa. I'll just start, to some extent, with the budget. As you know, it's budget season in the House and the Senate. There's some good news and unfortunately, some not such great news. Just going to, well, first, the good news. Revenue projections, collections have increased year over year, which is good. Probably in the fall, there was some discussion or concern that we, as a state, where revenue wasn't doing as well, and there was concern, were we entering the beginning of signs of a recession in the summer and the fall? And by December, I really felt like that was behind us. All of the economists were saying that we were getting strong, and a lot of that had to do with what the legislature and administration working together did, whether it be the climate, tech, and creating jobs, economic development, tax relief. We had major tax relief and so many other things that we did to help strengthen our economy and diversify our economy. And that's one thing I'm very proud of, Massachusetts. We have tried to diversify, just like, you know, people say when you're going to invest, diversify your investments if you can, that we have tried to do that in Massachusetts with life science. It says with clean energy, I believe that we can have, reach, going after our climate goals and clean energy, and create jobs that make, and so the whole thing makes economic sense for us as well. And we have done education, healthcare, so many other things. So monthly tax collections have been strong this year, and our projections are a little short of $700 million under what was originally projected, and we were conservative when we made those projections because we were worried about the potential of a recession. So just to go through a little bit, for the current fiscal year, Holliston received nearly $9.2 million in Chapter 70. This is a 22% increase since we passed the Student Opportunity Act in 2019. So hopefully, that has helped. Holliston also got more than $1.9 million in UGA, unrestricted local aid funds. That's being said, this year's budget season has the backdrop of, I'll be blunt, chaos and result in tremendous uncertainty coming from the Trump administration in Washington. That is the bad news. Federal funding cuts to services and grants, if even some of it goes through, will have a significant impact on Massachusetts and Holliston and all of the services and programs that impact our residents. For example, we have about a $62 billion state budget. That $62 billion relies, depending upon reimbursement, between $12 and $16 billion just for Medicaid services. So that's just Medicaid, not even all of the health-related funding and programs that we do. We also get another $2 billion, at least in education funds, that goes to cities and towns like Holliston to help particularly with special education, transportation, school meals. There's a chance, as I'm sure you've seen and heard, we don't know what's going to happen with the Department of Education and the funding. We also rely upon a lot of federal funding for our veterans, which a lot of the veterans' offices have been closed or are in the process of closing down. I am beginning to hear, and you may hear from some veterans as well, who are having trouble accessing their services, their programs, their benefits, and it sometimes is hard for them to get ahold of somebody, to even find out what is going on. Unfortunately, that is replicating itself in many other sectors of government and services and programs, and most of it is to people who really need and rely upon those services. So, you know, a veteran who may be getting help and counseling with PTSD, for example, suddenly is being told that those services may no longer be available. NIH funding, I'm sure you've heard about. Massachusetts is the fourth-largest amount of NIH funding, and that helps our hospitals, our universities, our private universities, our public universities. You know, I got a call two weeks ago from a parent that I know who said, "We're waiting for a trial, clinical trial for my daughter who has brain cancer, being told that that is most likely going to be cut." These are things that parents, real people in Massachusetts, are looking towards. The universities are being cut. So I don't want to sound an alarm, but I just think people should know that this, if even some of it comes to pass, it will have a trickle-down impact on the state budget and what we can do. Transportation, you know, we're a leader, the list goes on. And I guess I have to just say that, to me, these are cold-hearted and cruel. You know, they're being portrayed as waste, fraud, and abuse. I don't know how that can even be explained. A veteran said to me, "I got cut with a note saying that I wasn't performing my job, that it was, you know, fraud or waste." That is beyond my comprehension of how somebody could have served our country and be treated like this. So, you know, I think you may be hearing from folks in Holliston as well, and, you know, we are working with the federal delegation, and I think people need to be outspoken as to how this impacts.
Madam President, we had, two weeks ago, on a Saturday morning, we had Representative Jim McGovern from Congress come and spend about four or five hours at the Holliston High School-
Right.
...to hear from constituents. And the room was, it's a 900-person-capacity room, and I would say-
It's still.
...that it was three-quarters full. There were clearly, easily 500-plus people in the room, filled with passionate declarations of concern and calls for help, and they echoed much of what you're saying. I think Holliston stood up very much.
And that's great.
Yeah.
And I think people should know, if they are impacted, to not only let Jim McGovern know, Representative McGovern, who's got a great heart and he's an incredibly effective Congressman, but to send their letters directly to Trump and to, you know, the head of the House, the Speaker of the House. They need to be hearing from other areas, and I think that the more they hear from, the more they realize how people are impacted. They can't just push that aside. So I urge people to do that as well.
And we have certainly done that through the Town Manager's Office, reached out to Senator Markey directly, where we're expecting, and Jim McGovern as well. We are looking for congressionally-directed spending that was committed to a year ago and has not yet to arrive and is uncertain, and it will have an impact on a major project here in Holliston, which we'll talk about in a little bit.
Right.
But yes, there are local-level impacts and-
Right.
On behalf of the town of Holliston, through the Town Manager's Office, we are reaching out to share our concerns.
Right. And I urge you to send it to the Speaker of the House. I mean, it's the Republicans that control Congress, to be blunt, right now, and they should hear. We may not be their direct constituents, but they need to hear. I believe that that might help. And, you know, people, I think, are hoping that the state will fill the, plug the holes and fill the gaps, but, you know, we don't have the amount of funds to do all of that. So only Congress can fully do that and have, allocate the funding to fill the caps and take action. So, you know, I think that we're all in this together, and we'll get through it, but I think that, so if you hear other things, please share it with us as well. And we, in the legislature, I'm speaking, I believe, not only for the Senate, but I do believe, and I was speaking with the Speaker, the Governor, we will do whatever we can to protect Massachusetts residents and to protect their services, their programs, and their civil rights.
Thank you. Thank you for your advocacy and support and engagement on all of this.
Thank you, thank you. But yeah, so if you hear anything further, please let James and me know. I think that's important. So for the coming year, the Governor's proposed budget for Fiscal '26, which I should note was developed pre-Trump and Musk with all the cuts, put in almost $9.4 million in Chapter 70. So 9.4 for Chapter 70 for Holliston, which was almost $200,000 increase from Fiscal '25 for Holliston. Governor proposed $1.9 million for Holliston, which would be for Holliston unrestricted general government aid or local aid, which is the same as this year is. The Governor proposed full funding for the Circuit Breaker, which I do believe, you know, is consistent with what the legislature has done over the last few years. It supports districts with out-of-district special education through a combination of the Fiscal '26 budget and the Fair Share supplemental budget that we ended up doing. These two pots of money are projected to reimburse out-of-district special education transportation at full funding costs at the levels. Holliston's Fiscal '25 Chapter 90 allocation, which funds local roads and bridges, as you all know, is about $510,000. And again, in Fiscal '25, the legislature added $45 million for road and bridge supplement from the Fair Share, taking it from the transportation part of the Surtax or Fair Share, knowing that roads and bridges, that cities and towns have a lot of needs. And this has been a hard winter, so, you know, we'll see if we can do that again, and we'll certainly work on that. While being fiscally cautious is wise, especially given this year's level of uncertainty, it's early in the state budget process, and I'll let James talk about, you know, the House, which you know is in April, Senate in Senate, Senate is in May, and then we'll do the Conference Committee hopefully in June. And I do want to note, I did receive a letter expressing your local budget deficit challenges and pressures, and we'll do whatever we can to help Holliston clearly. Just want to mention, current budget for '25 earmarks were limited, but we were able to secure funds of $85,000 for a Council on Aging minivan, which I think has a wheelchair lift and is so important to our seniors and helpful. You know that mental health has been a really important area for me and to all of us, especially with COVID and post-COVID, so I was especially happy to secure $700,000 for mental health services for schools in my district. So each school district was able to get about $100,000 to put towards mental health services. I'm proud to have worked with town administration, Representative Arena DeRosa, and the Select Board to garner a $1 million grant from Energy and Environmental Affairs to close the budget gap for the construction of the Woodland Street Bridge and Dam. I know, I've seen it, you know, in the process. I drive by there periodically and know that this is an incredibly important missing link for all of the residents in town, especially given the proximity to the school, all of the schools that are there as well. So we will continue to work with Mastat and all of you to ensure that it's done, totally done by this fall.
We do look for, and the contract requires that the road be open September of 2025.
Yes.
And I anticipate we'll be doing some ribbon-cutting planning, and would love for you, sorry you couldn't get here from there by Woodland tonight.
[laughter]
But hopefully in September, we will be able to invite you back, and you'll be available, I should say.
Well, thank you. We'll celebrate.
Yeah.
We'll keep it open, and we'll stay on DOT to make sure that it is open at date. So plan the ribbon cutting.
So we invite you first, and then-
Yes, and then we have to come.
Right.
Right. We'll invite the Secretary, too, and tell her that she has to come. So, yeah. The other thing I want to mention, working closely with Representative Arena DeRosa, we were happy to get Holliston's Town Manager Act done-
Yes.
...and signed into law, yes, which should help Holliston with the hiring process. So that is something good. In legislative time, it went through fairly quickly.
Very fast. We appreciate your Herculean efforts, and later this evening on this agenda, we'll be receiving some, the names of four candidates being advanced-
Oh, great.
...for the Town Manager position.
That's exciting.
So the search is going well, and it's certainly the result of your hard work at the state level, so we appreciate that very much.
Well, it was all together with your help and assistance, we were able to get it through quicker, so thank you for that.
And we hope you're keeping a good eye on Mr. Hearn and his new role at the state agency.
I know.
So just let us know if we need to drop him a line or anything to say.
He's probably very busy there.
I know he is, yes.
A lot of changes, a lot of things going on. But yes, we will, we offered help and hope things go smoother for him, you know, definitely. One of the key roles as a legislator that often goes unnoticed is constituent services. And I do want to mention that I have one of my team here, Dennis Giambetty, who's here to help with district constituent services. I have a few other people. And last year, over 600 constituents called my office for help. And I have to, I say that because before I was a legislator, before I was a House member and then Senate, I never would have thought of calling my legislator for help. I never would have even thought, you know, that they could help with so many things. So it's important for people to know, who are listening, that we're here to help. We can't help everybody with everything, but there's a lot of issues that we can help cut through some red tape, even if it's a federal issue, some immigration or Social Security or Medicare. Sometimes we can connect them with Congressman McGovern faster or others through the process, Senators Markey and Warren, that we're here to help and help brainstorm what a solution might be if they're having problems connecting with state agencies, which happens, you know, so we can help them with that, whether it be their child, their parent, their, you know, spouse, whatever. We are here to help, and that's why I mentioned over 600 people just last year, that this is a major part of our job. And if we can't help, we'll at least always listen and try to refer them to somebody that might be able to do something. So, you know, I note that it was housing, healthcare, registry, you know, cars, registry assistance, fuel assistance, so many different areas. So, and, you know, that is a major part of what we do, and I encourage people to call us for assistance if they even think they may need it. We're here to help. I do want to thank the town for being in compliance with the MBTA Communities Act. Our housing shortage is a major state issue, and I do believe that every community must do what it can to ease the housing crisis. We all want our police, our fire, our teachers, our workers to be living in the area if they want to, and I really do appreciate Holliston coming together to get this done. So thank you. We've been proud to advocate on behalf of the town for a new Holliston High School building as well. Want to mention that, and in the accelerated roof repair program for the Adams School, and we will continue to work with everybody until the projects get completed.
Thank you.
So we look forward to supporting Holliston in your pursuit of other grant opportunities for the downtown sewer project, whether it be Mass Works and the Washington Street pedestrian improvements as well. I know those are areas that have been really important for the town to get done and successfully completed, so we'll do that. Lastly, I just want to mention a few things, because I feel like we had, it may have, some of the things may have been termed late, but we got, we got all of our major bills done and done very successfully. It was a historically productive session that I'm really proud of for both the House and Senate and the legislature, and working closely with the Governor and her administration. And I note that because people hear of all this stuff, that, you know, we're not getting, working well together, but we, in Massachusetts, are very different than the federal government, and we work really well together. So we had major tax relief, the biggest, the largest tax relief in over a generation. So many different, helping seniors doubling the Circuit Breaker, the largest childcare and dependent tax credit in the country. We did housing tax credits and tax incentives. We did so many other things. We made community college free in Massachusetts, first state in the country for it to be totally free like that, and we significantly decreased the cost of our state universities and our UMass system. We made all of the RTAs fair free, which I'm particularly proud of with the Metro West RTA. We reformed major healthcare sectors, including maternal health and long-term care. We passed a significant climate bill, which was great. We strengthened our gun laws. We expedited clean energy permitting and siting. And all of you, I'm sure, and all of the listeners heard about the Steward healthcare crisis. We really cracked down on private equity in healthcare after Steward, and we reformed early education and care. That's also been a really big issue for me, increasing it, increasing accessibility for parents and shoring up our providers to increase the number of seats available, enabling parents to go back to work if they wanted to, helping employers where there are gaps in the workforce in almost every sector. So we really, we really, and there's so many more things that I won't get into, and last week, we extended the participation in public meetings-
Yes.
...till 2027. And I just want to say, I'm- And I just want to say I'm committed to working to make that permanent, so we don't have to worry about extending it. I know it's going to go till 2027, which is great, but it is something that you all should be able to just depend upon and do, because it's really vital for civic engagement, public participation, and just, you know, for everybody. So I'm glad we got that done, and it was signed into law quickly. So I could go on, but I won't. So I'll turn it over to James at this point, and then for questions, as many as you may have.
Thank you.
No, sounds good. Well, thank you all, it's great to be here. This is one of my favorite meetings because I can walk, except when it rains, so it's literally around the corner. And we'll all miss Travis, but I understand that it's, the system's going pretty well. I was on that committee last time, and I think they're going to bring you names, she said they're going to bring you names tonight, so I will look forward, we'll look forward to working with whoever it is that is the new town administrator for the town of Holliston. And always enjoy working, the Senate President, we are so blessed to have her not only as our Senator, but as the head of the Senate, and it's really an honor, and I so appreciate her, the partnership, and her staff is just wonderful. We have a great relationship with her team. Talking about constituent service, I was actually at the senior center today with one of your staff, and we both had time with people up there. And one of the things that I just want to echo what Senator Spickles said, we really are here to help people, and some people don't know, the senior center did a survey a few years ago, two out of three people said they did not know who to call when they needed help from government. And what I say all the time is, call us, call me, call the center. We may have an answer, we may help you navigate the state bureaucracy, maybe it is federal, but we'll put you in touch with the right person. Maybe it goes back to someone here locally in Holliston, but it really is such an important part of the work that we do. And I'm always pleased when we can help people, and one of our big ones is DUA. We actually have a challenge with the unemployment system because in this small area, if I've got 45 people in one ear that are calling me, not able to get through on DUA, that's a bell going off of something systemic. But I always think of the people who aren't calling. You know, they're sitting there, they're frustrated, so anybody out there, please, anytime you want to be in touch, please do that. The Senator did such a great job. I just want to maybe highlight a couple other things that I was involved with, along those many things that we've done in the legislature. I am really worried, we've passed a $5 billion bond bill for housing. It's really just a down payment. It's been such a long time since we've put big money into housing in Massachusetts. We're going to have to be at this year after year. I'm fortunate, I'm actually going to be on the Housing Committee this session, it'll be interesting for me to be there. I still remember when I first sat down with leaders in this town, Chief Stone, he said, James, he said, I have 28 officers, two of them live in Holliston, most of them commute an hour or an hour plus to get to these, and it's worse. When I coached Little League baseball here, we, I, there was a firefighter, a coach, whether it be a teacher, and those days are, we're losing that. It's getting harder and harder for people in the community to live here. Yes, we need more housing, but we also need more housing for our seniors, our veterans, our first responders, our town employees, so hopefully we'll be able to do some things on that downstream. I did want, I was very happy that we passed Universal School Meals, one of the, we went the first state, but it's only a handful of states in the country that have done that. And I always remind people, yes, it means that every child gets a breakfast and lunch every day in school, which is great, but it also saves parents $1,200 a year. I mean, it helps everybody, not just the kids who can't afford school breakfast and school, you know, it's a, it's a good thing for all of us. And I remind people, how many times did one of our kids run out of the house without lunch money, or have to come back, or run up to the school? So, you know, it's, it's one of those, yes, it's great for the kids who really desperately need good nutrition, but it's good for everyone as well. I think, I don't know, a couple of, I did want to mention one more thing on housing. We had Ed Augustus here, he's, I guess it's not housing anymore, it's livable communities. Yeah, yeah. But it was great, and we talked a lot, and I always say this, we certainly want public housing to be available to anyone who needs it, right? I mean, there were those days when people got, you know, outlined, they weren't able to get into certain towns because of what they looked like, who they were. We don't want that. On the other hand, it's human nature to want to be in the community, your network, your family, source you show. So we're trying to fix this, and they've done a really good job so far. Local housing authorities used to get hundreds, if not thousands, of applications because of the way the system was set up. They're making some really good changes. I appreciate folks here in Holliston, but also the other towns I represent. We had a series of meetings on how could the system be better. I think they're doing a good job, and we want to prioritize local residents if we can, but still be available to everybody. And I think they're on a good path. I'm waiting to hear more on how it goes, but some good things happening, but we'll see. But, you know, anybody who taught, you know, our kids, our seniors, families, it's just getting really expensive and a big challenge. I love this town. I'm not sure I could afford this town today, right? That's just a reality that I think, I hear that from a lot of people, so. But I think that was all I want to, I mean, I really want to get into your questions. Again, the Senator did a great job giving the overview of what we have accomplished. I really enjoy working with the community here. I think we have a good ongoing back and forth, but anytime you need me, please be in touch, and looking forward to the years ahead. So, but why don't we, why don't we get to your questions and sort of updates that you want to share with us?
Absolutely. Well, I'll turn to the board first, and then I'll turn to the Finance Committee and the School Committee, who have representatives here this evening. Damon.
Yeah, taking this up to like a 10,000-foot level, I know we're all worried about financing, about grants, et cetera. At a state level, it feels like we are particularly dependent, or at least particularly vulnerable to cuts at the federal level, especially since we're so dependent on tech, biotech, education, et cetera. I'm kind of wondering, as legislators, do you have any informal advice for municipalities like ours, as we think about the knock-on effects that that uncertainty might have on our local economy, you know, the white collar workers who work there, who are also kind of funding the blue collar and service industry jobs? I think a lot about that cascade and how it might affect our overall tax revenues, kind of the viability of smaller municipal governments. So totally informally, but as we as a municipal government think about the next couple of years, what are some readiness steps that we can undertake in our fiscal planning to help us think ahead, considering that we don't know what things are going to be like six months, let alone four years from now?
You know, it's interesting, I was thinking about this coming in, because I used to be on Finance Committee, and all of your planning is based in part on town budgets depend on the state, state depends in part on federal, and it is a cascading effect. I would do scenario planning. I mean, I would just look at, you know, what's our worst-case scenario percentage-wise, just people really need to think through that. It's, you don't want to be negative, but you almost have to be ready for some of that stuff. That's just.
And what, I mean, I'm looking at, for the state level, beginning to look at it, and when, you know, about 10 years ago, when we entered the 2015, 2016 recessions, we had to cut a billion dollars from the budget each year. It was hard. It was really hard, because it's painful, and you know it's going to cause some pain, but we had to prioritize. So what are some of the things where you know are, the residents are so either vulnerable or rely upon, there are certain things that just can't be cut in any way? And then others that either can be decreased a little bit, or spread out over time a little bit more to save some of it? And I think by that, it's talking to a lot of the people who are your senior, on your senior team here, the departments, the divisions, the residents, you know, and it's, I'm hoping that it doesn't come to pass as bad as it could be, actually. But I think for all of us to be looking at that and, you know, being honest with people. And that's why I think, you know, our role is being honest in saying, I mean, even just as we started out with Medicaid alone, it's 12 to 16 billion. If that's cut, it's going to be hard.
And one of the challenges, and I was on Mary's show a few weeks ago, and she asked about this, the impact of federal, and I'm like, we're watching it closely, but one of the challenges is, I said, Mary, you're going to broadcast this show in 10 days, there'll be 10 more things that Trump does that disrupt what's going on.
10 minutes, there'll be something.
Yeah, 10 minutes, right, exactly, yes. It's, you know, and I, you know, and by the way, we've talked about Jim McGovern, I so appreciate that he came here. In some parts of the country, I know this is in partisan, there are members of Congress who are not meeting with their constituents because they're getting, you know, I think that's unpatriotic and it's dishonorable. They should defend their policies that they put in front of the American people. And it's hard enough, if we didn't support them, we still have to get up there and be as supportive and respond to constituents. So I really appreciated that he listened, and he stayed for hours to listen to every single person, so.
Thank you.
Awesome. Okay.
Well, thank you both for being here. You give a lot of great information, and oftentimes, my questions that I walk in with, you've already discussed. So I'm only just going to give you one comment here, because you brought it up, the extension of the ability to use like hybrid and remote participation for meetings, I think is just so critical. And I'd really like to see some permanence there, I mean, particularly with respect to things like the open meeting law, and, you know, the remote meeting actual law that's in, on the books, like talks about telephones and things like that, and it's a relic. And, you know, I mean, of course, you know, you understand this, and you realize this, and I know it's a, it's a, there's a, you know, it's a bramble of issues to sort of navigate, but I would, you know, strongly encourage and support and hope for some permanence there, and some resolution on some of those things, to be able to have some solid understanding. And, you know, if you want to speak to it, it's fine, but you don't necessarily have to, but I just, I want to sort of voice my support.
There's a lot of support for it, and I think there's legislation that I've, of course, sponsored that would do that. What I'm hearing is that some of the really, really tiny towns have certain issues with affordability, and they're trying to figure it out, and that that might be one of the things that's delaying it from just being permanent, so, but I agree.
I mean, the thing for, the thing for us that was so helpful is, you know, the ARPA money, was in, you know, and the COVID funds for cares and things like that, we were able to sort of push our way through, because we needed it because of the necessity, because we had to do it.
It was a great tool.
And we were actually able to, like, you can see the thing behind, the board behind you, and we have that, and it's been, you know, it's, it's great. Like, you know, the other night, we had a big public forum, we had lots of people able to participate, and we've had multiple times that, you know, you can't fit 500 people in this building, but you can get 500 people on the Zoom to participate in some of those meetings, and that's really important to maintain.
I agree, as I said, I'm a firm supporter of making it permanent. It seems ridiculous for us to even spend time debating on renewing it and renewing it. We should just make.
Everybody wants it, and everybody, you know, I understand there's, yeah.
Most people.
That's fair.
That's the problem, you know? But yeah, I'll continue to push for that.
I really, I appreciate it, and thank you for all the leadership and all the things you do for Holliston. It's, you know, we're very grateful, you know, you brought up Woodland Street, and being able to have your support and your help in that, in that space, and all the other things that we've, you know, the projects that we've had, you've been wonderful advocates and supporters of us, and so just thank you very much for all the things that you do to support and to represent our town.
It's a pleasure.
Do you remember what the number was Chris Mayo gave during the budget hearings for the IT, the IT budget? For the number of members, residents? I want to say it was 20,000, plus or minus, but every year when the IT budget comes through, our IT Director, Chris Mayo, gives us an update on how many people to date have been, have been, have participated in a public meeting through hybrid participation, remote participation, I should say. And I, I want to say the number was 20,000. Of course, it goes every year, but it's enormous for a town like Holliston to have that.
Civic engagement, it's happened in the state house too, with us having our hearings open to the public and remote and hybrid and sessions and just all of the other things. It's really increased participation, because people can participate, they may not be able to come to a town meeting for whatever reason, but this real, it really makes a difference. It's helped democracy overall, so I think we need to focus on right now.
Well, in that vein, I will say that through your comments, it's clear that there's a certain amount of whiplash happening at the state level, trying to follow everything and react to everything proactively or reactively. And I think all we can do is express our support for you and your gratitude as you continue. Times are challenging, given the amount of change that's out there, and change breeds uncertainty, and uncertainty breeds chaos, as you mentioned. So thank you for your focus through these challenging times, and to your comment about, and yours as well, the open door to your offices and the collaboration between the two of you. We are living from that, through that benefit with the Town Manager Act. I think that speaks exactly to the point of how well you collaborate with us, and I would just want to reiterate for residents here in Holliston that we truly benefit from that. And the open door policy that you both have to hear from constituents, I am a user of that. I have shown up in your offices to advocate for things here on Holliston, for Holliston, will continue to do so. You really do have an open door, and I'm grateful for the time that you're willing to give to your constituents. I just have a couple of things that, they're really asks, they're just two. We have a shared streets and spaces grant application, and we would ask for your support to accomplish some sidewalk, pedestrian, and bicycle infrastructure, but overall road improvements for all road users. That application went in in January or February, and we're due for an award announcement soon, and if not already given, would ask for support on that.
Yeah, I think.
You might see the ballards, the temporary flex posts that are out in front, so we're wrapping up on a pilot program there to see how those work, and would use that grant money to look, to make some permanent improvements there. And the second is, it's two-part. When, in that letter that we submitted on behalf of the town of Holliston for earmarks in the FY '26 budget, we did ask for $8 million for the downtown sewer project. I hear what you're saying about how early it is in the budget process.
Yeah, and usually in the budget, we don't do capital projects. That's more of a bonding type of thing, so that's good for us to know, though. So if a bonding bill comes through, we might have an opportunity to include it in there. But we don't normally do capital, that long-term, you know, 30-year types of payments, but.
It would be a game changer for Holliston to accomplish a major project that would fundamentally change our downtown area and also our economic base here in the town. Understand your comments, but wouldn't, would be remiss if I didn't bring it up here.
And it's good to know, because I know we set up a few meetings with Jim McGovern on some of the congressional directed funding.
We're waiting, we, he was approached about that when he was here in Holliston two weeks ago.
And that's a huge process too, in time, so it's always good to know what's on your mind and what's happening, because it gets, gets on the list, it gets.
The feedback we got from Congressman McGovern was that it's uncertain at this point in time.
Everything's uncertain.
But the work of the Sewer Commission is strong, and it's ongoing, and they are exploring other funding opportunities, which brings me to my last request, my last ask here, which is support for a Mass Works application that will be coming, forthcoming for the downtown sewer project. We've benefited from the One Stop for Growth program here in the past with Housing Choice Award, which we use to update our housing production plan, which did actually complement the work that we were doing to get us to the MBTA 3A article, that articles that we brought to town meetings. So we've definitely benefited through these programs, and would look to do that again with the Mass Works application. So I wanted to bring those to your attention.
We will do whatever we can to support and push it forward.
Thank you very much. Well, with that, I think the board is all set, so I will turn to, in the room first, we have members of the School Committee. I'll just invite whomever you'd like to have come up, as well as school administrators. We have Superintendent Dr. Cuska and Assistant Superintendent Dr. Jordan here as well. So any representatives from the schools, please come on up. We have multiple chairs that we could pull up. Dr. Cuska, Dr. Jordan, would either of you like to join us at the table?
I'm sure you're near a microphone.
Yeah, we can share, yeah. Good evening, and not to ignore our Finance Committee members, I see you on the call as well. If you don't mind, those from the Finance Committee, I'll just go through the School Committee first, and then turn to you guys on the Zoom call. Good evening. How are you? They are also here, because tonight they're going to present a application for the MSBA program. Do you feel like you just got corralled right now?
Yeah.
That was a lot of activity. Good evening, how are you?
Good, how are you, Tina? Thank you for being here, really appreciate this. Dan, I'm the chair of the School Committee. I don't know if you want to go around before.
I'm the vice chair.
David Jordan, Assistant Superintendent.
And Susan Cuska, Superintendent.
Good evening.
Good evening. So not to be overly greedy, and this one isn't actually about money, but could we set the ribbon cutting for August 25th?
Or school starts.
Not, just, just, so if we could do that, that would be, that would be wonderful, and certainly help us with our, our planning.
Is that a voted on calendar? Is that approved?
Have you been following, yes, the 26th?
No, I don't have one anymore, because my senior is a graduate.
The 26th is voted on as the first day of school. We're still working on a few other, other things. So 25th?
Got it.
Just let us know whatever day it is decided, and we will be there. It will be a celebration, yes.
Absolutely. And we really appreciate all the help with that, because that will be tremendously important as far as moving towards our new start times, which are, we finally are able to get our two elementary schools running at the same time, but they're both right there, so having two points of egress and exit to those, to that campus will be very beneficial. Just quickly, and maybe David can even get, or, sorry, Dr. Jordan can get a little more detail about it, but there is a proposal from the Massachusetts School Business Officers and MASS, the Massachusetts Association of Superintendents, to fund special education reimbursement at 90% for tuition and 75% for transportation. And so we'd like to advocate strongly for that. Obviously, as, you know, you know, special education costs are, you know, some of the biggest drivers of school budgets these days, and while we are fortunate enough to be in a position where we're going to be able to meet our budget needs without layouts, it's without layoffs, it's still significantly impacting our ability to offer additional educational opportunities to our students. So anything you can can do there would be enormously impactful. I don't know if you want to
That, you know, that is one of our, our volatile up and down costs. It's one of our areas with out of district tuition, as far as the percentages of which it's increasing as far as controlling for that. And then transportation costs, not just out of district transportation, which is transportation across, across the Commonwealth, not just within special education, but even even athletics, and our rear costs continue to climb.
Right. It's something that I would like to take a look at when we do the fair share sub budget and the allocation. We've done that in the past, and we'll see, we'll try to do some this time, too.
I just want to add, because I think I really appreciate Representative Rena DeRochi, you were able to attend the Legislative Breakfast of Tri-County that I presented at, and Susan Nichols on your behalf. We really appreciate the advocacy there. We talked about many of these topics. I just wanted to echo the food program. I happen to have been principal for the day at our Placentino Building last week, and I helped with breakfast and lunch for our students there. And they come in with happy faces. And even some of our students that are not as significantly challenged with finances may not have food at home, regardless of their financial situation. So it levels the playing field for them.
And it reduces the stigma that so many kids felt. And it just wasn't right. This just everybody
Exactly.
Their stomachs are grumbling.
Yeah, I do worry about that problem, like many others, as we're hearing all of the changes. But right now, it's going well. And Miller, I'll be principal for the day this Wednesday.
I'll have fun.
And similarly, me doing lunch duty with our grade three, five students who will be eating lunch for free as well. So thank you for that and for supporting all of our SEL initiatives over the years as well.
So can I just respond to you? Because on the House side, there is legislation to support that. And I think they did it in concert with some of the superintendents. I am co-sponsoring it. I think it's important. And the Senator mentioned, it's kind of interesting. We have a tight budget, and there's a lot of concern. And yet, some of the fair share money is rising. And so that'll be a challenge to figure out what we can or cannot do. I did just want to add, because I heard this even before I took office, about the rising costs of out of district special tuition. And it's more of a conversation starter, but I did file legislation that would limit towns being charged two and a half percent tuition increases. Because what was it, 14%, one year, 5%? That was just a killer to the small towns.
And they're still increasing.
And what I wrote was, if the state still in their wisdom needs to rise, they can. I don't have a problem with that. But it shouldn't all get passed on to the communities, which is a killer. And the reason I picked two and a half percent, because we all know that cities and towns cannot, they can only raise by two and a half percent their budgets without going to the voters. So why should the state with impunity be able to do that? It's just a, you know, we'll see where it goes. But it, I'm hearing it a lot from a lot, especially the small towns. And we're also hoping to look at the formula itself, which it's been a while since it's been looked at. And, you know, our towns, Holliston's a little different from some of the towns I represent. But, you know, we kind of, and I'm so glad the state addressed some inequities with Gateway Cities, that was good. But then we get thrown in with Weston and Wellesley. And I wish it we had been more of a graduated system, rather than just, yeah, and you're all sort of minimal supportive communities. I'm like, well, we're not Weston and Wellesley, though. We're not Lowell and Lawrence, but we're not Weston and Wellesley. So anyway, I think there's a commission study that's on both the House and Senate have bills to do that. We'll see if it comes to fruition. But I think it's worth at least looking at it and exploring the possibilities.
And then, oh, sorry.
I do have one follow up question related to your comment about the fair share amendment. Would it be the transportation dollars? Or would it be the education dollars that you would look to address school transportation?
Education, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. It would be for the school.
Yeah.
No, that would be wonderful. And then just
So I'm hearing it from all communities. You know, it's an area that I'm sure when you go meeting with others from other communities, it's the same thing, the special education costs.
And it's not just tuition for special education. It's also transportation has just gotten crazy.
Yeah, yeah.
We have a number of transportation replacements for students that are over $100,000 a year for just to transport them to and from school. And we've heard not in Holliston, but that there are districts that are basically allowing students to go in residency because the transportation costs are just so high. And I mean, that is certainly something that can't be for the best interest of students, you know, to, so, you know, that's just something that's
And we certainly want every student to get what they need, right? But the question is who, how do we fund it?
Well, we're legally, morally obligated to do that. So we're going to, so we're going to do that. But that sort of brings me to my, my next point. And look, I mean, nothing that Holliston has can compare to 12 to 16 billion dollar potential gap with Medicaid. So I don't, you know, I understand that you guys have significant challenges and uncertainty that you're dealing with with the federal budget. But any help that the state can provide in assurances to municipalities as far as, you know, the idea grants and other federal aid that we get, Holliston gets about a million dollars of sort of grants that come obviously through the state, but then comes to us. And while it's only about a percent, sorry, about 2% of our budget, it's for offsetting special education costs.
If it's IDEA, it's federal. And, you know, if we don't get the money, if they cut all that, it's going to have a ripple with that.
Right.
You know, we're not going to be able, I'll be blunt, plug the gaps and the holes that the federal trusts do. We don't have the money for all of it. And we can't spend our rainy day fund in one year.
No, right. But I mean, my, I'm just suggesting that we look at, you know, contingency plans, you know, above that. And it, I don't know what those, those are. Certainly no one likes the T word. But, 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 I mean, just, I mean, we are morally and legally obligated to provide these special education services. So what will end up happening is we will, there will be general education cuts, right, which mean positions.
We'll certainly, you know, listen to all of you
Thank you.
and hear your priorities and do the best that we possibly
And you know, I mean, I'm just, I mean, this is not
I mean, I doubt some of those, I was on the school committee, too. So I went through when we went through, I remember I was in the legislature, I hate to say it, when we voted on some of the cuts. And then I had to implement the cuts on the school committee. That was painful.
I wouldn't, certainly not envy you in that position. And then lastly, just to sort of echo, echo Ben on the, the remote participation. But to take it maybe one step further, just to look towards ways of sort of supplement, not supplementing, sort of replacing minutes with, you know, for recorded meetings with either a transcript or just, just having the recordings. I mean, it seems almost like an extra burden at this point to do minutes for something that's not recorded. And anyone can watch the entirety of the meeting. Or transcription services are pretty easy. And YouTube even, I think, does it, you know, automatically.
That's one thing, actually. I'm glad, glad you mentioned that. Because I was thinking that particularly if we aren't cut on so many of our federal funding, are there things that with the schools administrative burdens, you know, filling out paperwork, forms on the town side, are there things that wouldn't necessarily cost a whole lot of state dollars, but save you a lot of dollars? Let us know on those, you know, if there are forms that have to be filled out every month, maybe we can go to every other month or every third month, or, you know, things, things like that, that can save money, count in the long run.
You're looking for ideas from the municipalities to come up to your, when does that conversation start for you?
It
Ongoing now.
Yeah. And particularly if, if there are major cuts, that's one, one area that we did maybe 2008, an administrative burden type of bill where, where we did look at some of, you know, cutting some of the costs. And some of it may have been implemented, some sometimes doesn't. But if there are things that you're aware of specifically that would save time, energy, and money for the town without cutting access to services or programs or reducing what you want to provide, reducing the values of our town, then let us know.
Sure. Okay.
And I don't know if you can help with this, but the grants process is still pretty cumbersome with state department, even just advocacy around that. It used to be worse. I can remember driving on a Friday afternoon to Mulden because we had to have it stamped in their office by whatever, 4:00 PM. The paper copy now is electronic. But it's still, is multiple locations still, they're not all in one place in that process. I mean, you could speak to as well. It's pretty cumbersome. It goes through multiple people that I sign on. It's just, you know.
Probably bureaucratic, I mean, we'll talk, yeah.
Okay.
We just could hear it, yeah.
Okay.
Right. Yeah, things, things like that, I think, if it can make a difference, then you can take a look.
So Madam President, what I'll do is turn to the finance committee, unless there's more.
No, we will.
No.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Jordan?
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll have you back up to the table.
First minute.
Well, they're clearing out. Is there anyone from the finance committee who would like to ask a question or share a comment? Please go ahead. And you don't need to, well, just introduce yourself. Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Shada.
I would be, thank you for allowing me to participate.
Sure.
I first want to give a shout out to Ben and Dan because they've heard me complaining about the minutes for the open meeting law for at least five years. And most James and Karen have listened to me say this every year, every March for the last four or five years to get rid of the minutes requirement. You talk about saving money. I will tell you right now that that's about 80% of the finance committee budget is appropriation of minutes that no one ever looks at. So, so I am a very, very strong advocate, as I have been for years, of fixing the OML to, to Ben's point, get rid of the arcane technology references, modernize that, but also allow for meetings that are recorded to be provided as, as basically the train, you know, the meeting, you provide the recording rather than minutes, because that's far more accurate and far more, far easier to produce these days than, than minutes. Budget wise, I did have a couple of questions. So the first one kind of follows up with what Dan was saying. So, so we all know we're in this chaotic situation. But there are two things that obviously concern me all the time. One is how accurate the cherry sheet's going to be when, when everything, when the dust settles. But this year, because of this chaos, I'm also worried about, is the legislature going to, or the, is the state going to try to compartmentalize the damage if it comes? In other words, you talked about the Medicaid funding, right? Karen talked about Medicaid funding. If it's government, where federal government comes along and says, okay, we're wiping out a bunch of this funding, okay, is the state, you, we all know the state can't make up that deficit. So, so is the approach going to be if a program is cut or reduced, that the state is going to look to proportionally deal with it, that same program? Or is it going to be something like, well, we're going to spread the pain out to reduce the impact to that one program? And that's important to me because when you start spreading the pain, you know, then it starts coming to the municipal budgets and the blade. So.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'll be honest with you. I, I have to say, it probably, and this sounds like a cop out, but it will depend upon the program, you know, just like for the town, if you get major cuts, would you cut chunks out of your budget? Or would you try to use a scalpel and, and look at programs and services and how they impact and help, you know, the residents and try to do it that way rather than large swaths of programs and services? So it will, it will, it will depend. I mean, that's what we did, that's what I did back in 2015, six and 16, when we had to cut a billion dollars from the budget after it was done, looking at individual programs and seeing what, what can we cut? And listening to people and agencies and, you know, what, what was happening. So, you know, I, I
This is not a cop out, Karen. It's a perfectly valid answer, right? I guess that from the municipal, you know, obviously thinking on the municipal finance side, I'm just more worried about cherry sheet changes, right? Usually, the only thing we have to worry about are nine Cs, right? And so you sit there and you say, okay, we've got the cherry sheet, we've got a budget passed. We know that nine C comes first before it hits us, right, directly. So in this case, you don't really know. And that's kind of where I was going with it was, I'm trying to get a feel for how, what level of confidence you guys will have, you know, both you and James will have in the cherry sheets that we get this year.
And I can tell you, when I had to make the budget cuts of a billion dollars, if you remember, I think it was either 15, 16, or 16, 17, we held local aid and school aid harmless. And we ended up cutting other things, knowing the priority. And it was in July that we had to do that, June, July of, of the year. So the fiscal year had either started or was about to start, and cities and towns had already done their budgets and planned. If we can do that, certainly that would be a preference. We'll do the best we can.
Madam President, we will have our town meeting on May 7. We will be looking for the finance committee recommendations on the budget and other spending articles. I believe, Ken, the date is April 23 that we hand off the Level Three. We do it in the four levels, with the fourth being from the finance committee late April. You've already mentioned that the timeline is early still. So we're in very strong communication with you. And Kathleen Buckley is our interim town manager. And I know that communication will continue as we do finalize both Level Three for the Select Board and then Level Four for the Finance Committee as we head into town meeting. But just in terms of the town's timeline, May 7 is our, is our town meeting. So I understand Ken's questions about confidence and certainty. But I also understand your comments about early in the budget process. And we can rely on good communication to keep us abreast of changes as they come through, if they come through.
Right. Great. Thank you.
Yes, and I'm guessing we're not going to get a local aid resolution like we have in prior years?
No, we, I would have, I mean, we started talking about it, but then with what's happening, it's, it's really difficult to do. I know that it, it would be great if we could do it. But I'm not certain it would be fully reliable and could end up hurting more than helping.
Yeah. No, that's why I said, I didn't expect, given what's going on in the short term. So, okay, well, as I said, I just, I would just reiterate that from my perspective on the finance committee, you know, we're always concerned about the cherry sheets, right? And, and so, you know, Dan was just telling me about his concern about the school federal funding pass-throughs from the state. You know, our, our main concern is just making sure that the cherry sheet we get is, we have some level of confidence. And I know that this year, probably lower confidence than usual. But it's, it's really going to, from our perspective, going to turn on, you know, when we get the, when we get the numbers from, from you guys, how confident you're, you are that those are relatively protected should things go south fast. So, but again, my last thing I'll say is, thank you very much. I don't, usually don't have the time to say this, but I appreciate the efforts that both of you put in on, on the town's behalf. So I definitely appreciate it. And James knows, I have many frank discussions with him about finance at the state level. And I talk to you on occasion, or your, or your staff most of the time. But I do appreciate everything you guys do for the town. So.
Thank you. And we appreciate everything all of you do for the town. You know, again, it's a team effort.
I was singing your praises to another finance committee member of another town on, on how we've spaced out our major investments in Holliston. And it's made a big difference. Some other towns are just getting squeezed even worse on taxes. So kudos to you and your team and everyone who's been part of that process over the many, many years here in Holliston.
All set, Ken?
Yes, all set. Thank you, Tina.
Michelle, I see you on the call. If you'd like to add a comment or a question.
Um, no questions. I just want to echo what Ken said about our appreciation for the efforts that you put in on our behalf. Not just the finance committee, but the residents in the town, everything you do for us. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All set, Michelle? Thank you. Okay, I don't see any other finance committee members on the call or in the room. So with that, we've kept you for an hour. You've been incredibly generous with your time. You made a comment earlier about the impact potentially from the federal changes trickling down to the local effort on veterans. And, you know, at the end of the meeting, under other business, raised a comment to Kathleen, our interim town manager, just to check in with our veterans agent on how veterans here in Holliston, we haven't had an update from that department here in town. And it's, it's worth hearing from our veterans agent. So we can talk about that under, under other business. But I appreciate your comments.
And if there's anything that, again, that we can do to help the veterans agent and the veterans, you know.
We're hearing it at the local level. We'll bring it up.
Yeah, Massachusetts has among the most generous veterans benefits in the country. And we're one of the few states that have, every town, every municipality has a veterans agent, too, because we prioritized that.
Well, we had our most wonderful veteran, Bobby Blair, here earlier. And so they're active here in Holliston. And we appreciate you looking out for them. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming.
Good evening.
Great to see you all.
Thank you both. Thank you so much.
Take care.
Good to see you.
Great to see you.
Thank you.
Tina, good to see you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good to see you. Thank you.
Great to see you, too.
Thank you.
You, too.
Good luck with the transition.
Appreciate it.
Everything goes nice.
Good evening. All right, we're going to move on with an update from the Town Manager Search. We had a, the Town Manager Search Committee earlier. I think they're
I'll go check to see.
One minute, please, while we reorganize. Are they socializing? Because we could also move
Sorry, James. I just told them we're ready. So they're coming.
Well, we've been asked to stick to our agenda. So I think
Yeah, no, they're coming, they're coming.
It's worth doing that.
They're coming.
Good evening, please. Come on up. We have John Cronin. I see Jeff Marshall. I see Hillary Resnahan, Mark Aronian from the screening committee. John, would you like John, would you like to invite everyone up to the table, or?
Sure.
You're welcome to, if you'd like.
Our whole team is not here. We have one on Zoom, Marlene Fine.
There's Marlene, I saw her earlier. Good evening.
Two of other friends had to depart, they could not hang around, but.
John, you have some business to present the board with this evening, and we have some kind words to offer back to your committee.
We like kind words, Tina. Kindness, it's great to see the Senate President in the hallway. Greetings, everyone. Hello, Ben. Hi, Damon.
Hello.
Madam Chair.
Good evening.
Kathleen, thanks for having us this evening. So my name's John Cronin, I'm the Chair of the Screening Committee for the Town Manager Search. It's my pleasure this evening to appear before you. I have a few thoughts, and I'm going to give you some paperwork in just a second, okay? So we can just get into it. So this evening, we're pleased to present to you on behalf of my colleagues, Hillary Breznerhan, Marlene Fine, Carolyn Dykma, Jeff Marshall's with us, Sarah Zarelli could not be here, but she was at our vote earlier, and of course, our favorite Mark Aronian. The seven of us met recently, and this evening, we're prepared to deliver four names from our efforts to your attention. Before I get there, I have a couple of thoughts to share with you. So the process getting here, as you know, you appointed us. We reviewed letters of interest and application from 18 candidates. From that 18, on March 6th, we selected six for interview. So we sat in this room on March 15th, Saturday, 9:00 to 6:00, and we interviewed six candidates with our, with your recruiter, Paradigm Associates Bernie, Bernie Lynch. The emphasis that day was kind of centered around the same kind of questions for each of the candidates, with appropriate follow-up based on what the candidates offered us. They focused on the following attributes: career overview, leadership management style, communication, collaboration, building communities, land use sustainability, personnel management, collective bargaining experience, capital finance, infrastructure, Select Board relations, which is probably very important, and financial management. At the end, the candidates were asked if they had questions for us, and I'll get to that in a second. So we covered a lot of ground. Each interview went roughly an hour, maybe a little bit more if there were things going on. But we had widespread support at the end for the four candidates that we're recommending to you. There were some nuances within each, and when you get to meet them, you'll see what those are. One thing I wanted to impart to this board, and I think this is really important to know, especially for people who are listening and have an interest in how the town is run, I want to compliment the board, because it was quite, quite evident that these candidates came to Holliston for a reason. It's attractive to work here. There is a strong sense that this town is ready for strong leadership, is supporting strong leadership. I think the outgoing town manager, as he was when he left, left a very good impression. Many spoke very highly of him. Your leadership and the projects you're promoting were attractive to the candidates. They all talked about the same thing. They did their homework. They've watched your meetings. They've watched you, they know what's going on, and they want in. And that's a reflection on how welcoming and how well you've prepared the town for excellence in leadership. And don't overlook that, because it hasn't always been like that. So take a bow. All the candidates, in addition to exuding that exuberance, felt that this was the kind of place they wanted to work, based on the financial stewardship that this board has done, based on the projects, including the Sewer Commission and some of the other exciting things that are coming down the road. And they couldn't wait to get here. They really want the job. It was very evident. And at the end, you know, we asked them, do you have any questions for us? And almost all of them said the same thing. What is the biggest challenge that the new town manager is going to encounter when they arrive in Holliston? And, you know, your mind races, I've got a lot of answers to that question. But we all agree, there's only one answer. There's a primary answer. And it's really how they're going to take the transition of this new town manager role and incorporate it into the process that you all envisioned for him or her. So they got that, they see that as a, not a challenge, but something they're going to have to confront. So based on that, it's now your turn. I wanted to just read you very quickly the names of the individuals. Let me give you a packet, is okay, Tina?
Sure, yes, please.
There you go.
Thank you.
There you go, Ben.
Thank you.
The, the search process, which as you know, was coordinated through Community Paradigm Associates and Bernie Lynch helped draft this letter, both Bernie and I have signed it. This evening, we'd like to recommend the following four individuals for your consideration. I will just name the names, I'm planning to get into the backgrounds unless you want to, Tina, but the first is Mr. Frank Gervasio, the second is Ms. Kara Lustig, the third is Mr. Mark Strange, and then finally, Mr. Darren Tangeman. These four individuals have a variety of different skills and experience, which we think your board will find very interesting when you meet with them. And at this point, I just wanted to pass along my thanks to each of the members of the Screening Committee. Highly professional, they, I think they all thoroughly enjoyed it. It was very insightful, and thank you for giving us an opportunity to serve you, the town of Holliston, in this important role. We're here for any questions you might have before you move on, Madam Chair.
One question before I open up to the board. Are you posted still, or did you guys adjourn from your?
We adjourned to come here, but we are posted to be here.
Okay. Damon, any questions or comments for the Screening Committee?
You know, not to be too general, but I'm kind of interested to know, for the four candidates that you're presenting tonight, were there, were there any that you didn't get to questions that you would have liked to ask that we can kind of pass on during our interview process?
Well, we were pretty thorough.
You had any hours to be thorough.
You know, yeah, I think the best...
We made a follow-up question.
You'll always feel like with one or two candidates, you could spend more time with them, but I think generally covered a lot of ground. There's, you know, full day of interviews, you get to know what you have to do. But could we have done a second interview? I suppose, but we got the gist, and I think you'll, you'll find that we thoroughly covered ground with most of the topics that were presented earlier, Damon.
And obviously, no need to name names here, but at one point, you said that there were six candidates that came in for interviews. What were some of the, what were some of the criteria that kind of were the deltas between the six and the four that came through?
So I'm thinking of the two that are not advancing. They probably lacked the kind of leadership and experience that a town manager would need on day one. That comes to mind first. And then scale, one of the candidates had more of a, the scale of experience wouldn't fit here. It was just an apple and an orange, I would say, yeah. But the rest of them, the ones that are before you, have existing, you know, leadership experience, very different. Some are in roles of town manager, ilk, and others are rising, and you can see the talent pretty quickly.
And any of the four are definitely qualified.
All strong candidates?
Very fortunate to be in this position. Four solid candidates.
And Marlene, I see you on mute. If you'd like to unmute and jump in at any time, I do recognize you up there, and you can, please jump in. Otherwise, I'm going to turn to Ben.
Yeah, well, thank you. I really appreciate all that time. I mean, I recognize nine hours of Saturday to talk to all these, these candidates as a lot, a lot, and I really appreciate you putting in that time to really help this process. You know, your opinions are valuable and important to be able to help us make a better decision. I think, I just have one question here, and that is, you know, obviously, we can't, we don't want to talk about specifics, but did you find that the candidate pool was looking to kind of take what the previous town manager had done and sort of run with it? Or do you think that there might be some opportunities or some shifts in directions based on some of the experience or personalities or anything like that?
I would say they all have their own leadership abilities.
Okay. They do. There's overlap. I mean, don't get me wrong, I saw Travis in a couple of them, because, because there's some shared skill sets. But Mark's right, they're all, individually, they're different with their leadership style. But, yeah, I think the range of their experience was spelt a little differently for you. You'll get what you're looking for, but it'll be a little different.
And inevitably will. Inevitably would be, yes.
Go ahead, Jeff. Jeff, and then, oh, Marlene, and then Jeff. Go ahead, Marlene, she has her hand up.
I just wanted to add that one of the comments that the candidates uniformly made was that they were so impressed that the town had a strategic plan, and they saw that as the blueprint for their coming in and what they were going to do. So I had the sense that none of them had an agenda of theirs, that they wanted to take the town in a different direction. They were pleased to have a direction to go in and a direction that the community had endorsed.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Okay, Jeff?
Yeah, I was just going to echo John's comments, that the skill sets of the four that are coming through were clearly ones that could be successful in this role. The two that we moved, moved away from were probably ones that weren't quite ready for the, for this level of a position. And we felt like, you know, that we had the top four.
Great. But thanks again. I really appreciate the, the time and the information that you put in, so thank you.
Well, we do owe you a debt of gratitude for the hours spent and the effort put in. It's, it's a huge commitment, and I, I think we knew that when we asked each of you to consider taking on this role as a Screening Committee member, and so grateful for your acceptance of that, because it was no small ask, as you explained earlier, the number of hours spent interviewing and reviewing materials. So a huge debt of gratitude. I'm incredibly proud that we had a Screening Committee of this caliber. I know each of you, and those not here, to be skilled professionals in the work that you do outside of your town, your volunteer roles here in Holliston, but also through your volunteer roles here in Holliston. And that gives me an enormous amount of comfort, that you are, you fulfilled the task that was put in front of you, both by Bernie Lynch and the Select Board, which was to select qualified, strong candidates. And I couldn't have more confidence in the names that I have before me, knowing who was a part of the screening to get them to here. So again, an enormous debt of gratitude. From here, what we'll do, and I will just point out for those listening who might not have followed this process so closely, the Select Board was removed from it up until this point. We would receive periodic updates through the executive search firm on timeline and process, but we were not getting any updates in terms of the candidates, who they were or where they're coming from. So this will be our very first time getting to dive into the information. From here, we will have Bernie Lynch of Paradigm, Community Paradigm Associates, come to us on April 7th to explain the interview process and set the board up for a successful public interview of all four candidates, as well as provide us an update on the reference checks, which are currently ongoing. Now that they've, they've been presented to the board, those reference checks are started. And then we plan our interviews on Friday, April 11th. That is the tentative schedule, assuming their availability. So just to let you know that your work is getting handed over, and we're going to run with it.
I think that's wise to just do interviews on that day, nothing else.
Yeah, I'm a little embarrassed that we're only doing four hours worth of interviews, whereas you guys have closer to nine or 10, but we're, we put in our time, I guess, otherwise.
And yours might be longer interviews.
Right, right.
Just a couple of thoughts, real quick. Thanks for the kind words, as always, Tina. I have financial elements that the candidates presented as part of their packet. I know Bernie does too. So if you want to interview, want access to him, let me know, or Bernie, in preparation for your interviews. And what was the other thing I was going to say? With respect to Bernie, he could not be here tonight, he's tied up in New York, so I know you're going to see him on the, on the 7th. This is the second time we use him. He was on that side of the table, you're in good hands. So we wish you the very best.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for all that you've done to get us to this point.
We understand through our appointment that we, we stand ready in the event that bad things happen and nothing happens. So we hope never to see you again under these terms, for that reason only. But we are not disbanding until a time certain or until you fulfill your role. So we'll wait to hear from you, Kathleen, I suppose, when things are done. But for now, we stand ready to help and assist, and hope you have a great night.
I think your Saturdays are free for a little bit.
For now, right? All right, we good?
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Nice to see you all. Thank you, Marlene.
Thanks, guys.
Have a great night.
Thank you for the information.
All right. Oh, by the way, thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to move on with the agenda to public comment. I'll do the board first, and then the room, and then the Zoom call. I will just point out that we are very patiently waiting, the School Committee and School Administrators, for Agenda Item Number Five. We are a full agenda this evening. So with that, public comment, please, Damon.
I'll keep it brief, but on point, I think that last week, we had open forum about the DBW facility, one of the planned potential sites, which is near Pinecrest. We had a lot of participation, to say the least, in that meeting. And I think that there were some, there was some information that we already were aware of. I think it exposed some communication gaps that we have to fill and get better at. But there were some pieces of info that I thought are worth us mulling over a little bit. And for any folks who are on the call or here who are interested, I was moved by some of the arguments, at least to the point of inquisitiveness and a willingness to hear a few more options. So nothing to act on there yet, Madam Chair, it's just, you know, I've been mulling that over quite a bit, and just want to put on the table, and I'm thinking that through.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have, like, one thing, it's more, I guess it's more of a request, I guess this could go under Other Business, but I'm going to bring it up now, is I think I'd like to see in our agenda is to make sure that we have information on how to subscribe to our agenda.
Oh, sure.
And I think we should make sure that people understand that that is an option, that they can, they can do that. And similarly, it's through the same process to be able to subscribe to the Town Manager Newsletter. I got the, the numbers, and only 92 people subscribe to the Select Board agendas, and there's 1,200 and plus who subscribe to the Town Manager Newsletter.
All right, so Jamie Haycock, you've got a job, the high school seniors, get them to subscribe, and to my husband Travis, sign what the what?
Well, we just asked you, he has that question.
Ninety-two, okay.
I think it's important that, that people know that they have that ability to do that, and I think we should be...
Lower my chair.
We should be, we should be really pushing that and making sure that people understand that that is an option available to us. And then further beyond that as well, is that you can always email us too, or email the town, the town manager's office, and make sure that, you know, reach out, contact us if you have questions, concerns, anything like that, you know, we should have, be getting more information from, from people as things come up. And, yeah, subscribe to those, those agendas. I'm working on some other things to try to see about other ways for communication and some other ideas that are not ready for conversation, but just trying to do some, some other things. But I think that is a very simple, straightforward thing, so I'd like it in the agenda, and I'd like, I'd like to, you know, if we can bring it up sometimes during the meeting as well. And then I would strongly urge any boards and committees to do the same, to make sure that people know that they can reach out. The one that has the most subscriptions in, in there is the Planning Board, there's like 1,100 people, because of, for reasons. And, but there's, there's opportunities for you, if you want to understand what's going on in those boards and committees, that you can do so. So that's my...
And we can talk about it further under Other Business, and what that might look like. Okay, thank you. Okay. My only public comment is to reiterate what Bobby Blair had to say when he was in here earlier, April 19, 1775, the shot heard around the world took place on the Lexington Common, and we will be having an event here at Town Hall. I don't know why he only invited you two, but I have a feeling it's because he thinks I work that, that hour in the morning, but...
Or he just assumes you'll be there.
Yeah, well, there you go. However, want to make sure the Holliston Reporter captures that and shares that information, because again, this is living history, when we, when we honor things like this on the 19th, yes.
Madam Chair, just a quick note, auspicious day for us to get this flag. Today is actually the anniversary of the 1765 Quartering Act, which the British Parliament put into effect, demanding that residents in towns like Boston give housing, food and shelter to British troops. So it was not the shot heard around the world, but probably the gunpowder.
Sure, sure. Let's start at that rate, okay. So I have no other public comment with, which I will turn to the room. Any public comment here in the room, if you would just raise your hand and come on up to the board? Okay, not seeing any in the room. Not seeing any in the room. I'm going to turn to the Zoom call. If you wouldn't mind raising your hand, that's to use the reaction button. To do so, if you are on a call, I would ask you to star nine to be recognized, then six to unmute, star six. I don't see any hands going up. I'll give it another moment because technology sometimes is not our friend. Seeing no other public comments, we will move on in the agenda. Again, we have a very important guest here this evening for a statement of interest request from the school committee and school administrators. So we'll have you back up to the table again, please, and thank you for your patience while we work through our full agenda.
Just, just a point, I, I am one of the 92. So, you know, I, you know, it's how I keep, it's how I keep an eye on you. But, but anyway, thank you for having us back. We're here to present our seventh statement of interest for, for the Holliston High School.
But how many emails to sign after?
All right. Thank you.
We're going to have at least two more.
Okay. Please, go ahead.
And so with that, yeah, I'll turn that over to Dr. Cusco and Dr. Jordan. They're prepared to, to give a, a presentation, but we can also move on to questions or whatever.
So given that it's the seventh, I just took one of the previous presentations and updated it for you.
Okay.
So I don't know if you want me to go through the entire presentation. I did share it.
I would just, if, if you don't mind, I would just say, what are the changes from the previous? That, I think that's really the main thing.
Yes.
I don't think we need to go through the entire thing. I think the town is all, they, they know what the, they know the drill, but what's different this time?
So the one difference from last year is that we actually had to remove one of the items because we had item number four. When we wrote this in the past, we were seeing a bubble coming up with students and that bubble could have led us to having to shift students to another level. And we may, we were predicting that we might need to use the high school and have a larger space there for some of the students and that bubble coming up. Since we wrote that, we've actually seen the shift go the other way. And now we're seeing more of a decline in our, particularly in our Placentino students, the kindergartners coming up and so forth. So we, we really can't predict that we're going to need an enrollment increase now. That, that's now two years in a row that we started to see this decline. So I did have to remove item number four, which would be because of an unusual enrollment shift, we would then request that as part of the process for the SOI as well.
Then there, there are a number of remaining items that would have us qualify if we're chosen in the program?
Yes. Number one, five and seven.
Thank you.
You'll have to read that in the, you have to read that into the record.
Yep.
And it will highlights what those areas are covering as well.
Okay. Anything to add?
No, I mean, just that I think it's important for us to continue with down this process. You know, it's not that you're put on a waitlist and it's, in a given year, it could be, could be the year. I think knowing the high school with, while there was a renovation at some point in the 90s, we are still looking at single pane glass at our windows. We're still looking at a boiler that's on the far corner of the building as far as the, the heat conservation, energy conference conservation. It's not an efficient building and an older building.
I think I would add too, I, you know, two of the SOIs were written prior to my arrival here. So I guess it would be 2018, 19, and then, I'm sorry, 20, 19 and 20, and the next five are with me. But if you look back to the timeline of when the high school was renovated, it was, the decision was made to do the renovation and I think it was around 2000 that it was actually went through. And then you had the building projects at Placentino and Miller as well. So the town was challenged by, you know, having these projects overlap in timelines. But when you look at that timeline as well, from the time you started applying for the SOI, the schools were applying for that, the renovations were less than 20 years old. So, you know, there's, you know, the first couple didn't even get us into that. I think as you look at some of our seller repairs that we're doing lately in the building projects, usually it's that 25-year marker before they even are looking at it. So our timing might have been just a little premature because of that, even though we do see the need for the current needs of students and the programs that they need to offer. But, you know, similar like the heating and all of those things, we just can't fix those in the building. That is, the original building as old as it was, but it didn't look as bad and as needy because of the renovations that were done.
Okay. Thank you. We are, we're familiar with the timeline. Damon, this is his first time receiving an SOI application request for a new high school, a new build. Could you just walk us through the timeline to expect over the next 12 months before we're potentially at the table again? Not that I would, we would hope not to be, we would hope to progress in the program, but could you just walk through key dates or timeframes over the next 12 months?
So this has to be submitted by April 11th. So Dr. Jordan and I will go back in and we make some slight edits to the current application that's in there. They just carry it over each year and then we just change whatever has changed. So by April 11th, prior to April 11th, you'll have to sign those electronic ones as well, Tina. And then we end up hearing in the fall as to whether or not we are being considered for feasibility.
The fall, okay.
So once we, if, if and when that was to move forward, then we would come back and meet with you and talk about the feasibility timeline as well.
Okay. We heard from the Senate President and James Arina Durosa, Representative, that they, they stand at the ready to support our application. I, I take that to mean, to whatever extent we're looking for their support. So perhaps we revisit this in the fall as you're getting feedback from the MSBA program because they sometimes will reach out ahead of time and let you know how the process is going.
Well, what happened last year, which made us optimistic as we were, right before they made decisions, they actually came out and did a walkthrough with us. And it made us think that that was actually moving us along. So we had a really good conversation with them. And then I think just it really, every year is a new year and a new group of schools. So you're, every year, it's like you're starting, not starting over as far as you're still in the queue because you kept in the queue for all those years, but it depends on who you're up against that year and how needy those projects are really.
Well, on behalf of the town, we would certainly support any outreach that you'd be looking to have with the state reps, our legislative representatives to support this application as the process is moving forward. So if you need us to make a request that they come join for a school visit, or there's an advocacy day down at the State House, whatever it may be, we, we stand at the ready to support you in that because I do think it makes a difference. And we certainly heard the offer from, from the two of them this evening to respond when called. So I think it'd be smart to do that next year.
And last year, we did submit the facilities report that James Keast had helped put together. I mean, we submitted every document that we had. And Senator Spilker's office did also give a letter from her on our behalf. So we probably will, I probably will email again tomorrow and just ask if they could update, update a letter to us again.
Full team effort to cross the finish line here. Any other comments or anything you want to add?
Appreciate everyone's support.
Sure. And so, and I was joking about the emails. I, I didn't actually remember that there were emails that come after the vote that I need to be paying attention to, so I will.
Madam Chair, procedural clarification. Is this a motion to conduct the vote with this language or simply a motion to adopt the SOI language, which then results in a vote? I can, I can bundle it. I'll bundle it. My old Roberts rules will be kicking in.
You read it publicly and then you make the motion to.
Right, to.
That's what I would say. So.
Exactly as, as it was done with.
He's like, do not change.
We have to do it. We have to be very specific with that language.
Then with your leave, I will read the statement of interest language as proposed.
Thank you, yes.
Absolutely. Resolved, having convened in an open meeting on March 24, 2025, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the Select Board of the Town of Holliston, in accordance with its charter, bylaws and ordinances, have voted to authorize the Superintendent of Schools to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the Statement of Interest Form dated April 11, 2025, for Holliston High School located at 370 Hollis Street, Holliston, Massachusetts, 01746, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Priority area number one, building jeopardizing student health, poor health and learning environment. Priority area number five, replacement, renovation and modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating and ventilating systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in the school facility. And priority area number seven, replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with the state and approved local requirements. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this Statement of Interest Form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the Town of Holliston to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Thank you, Damon. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I, am I seconding you or is it?
No, before we.
Because I did, I did have questions.
Yeah, please do.
So just a couple of things. I had sent you my questions beforehand because I wanted, I wanted you to know what I was going to ask before I asked. I don't like, I don't like surprising people on this, in these situations. So, you know, I asked that first one, which is what is, what changed. The second one is that are there projects that we need to start doing because we haven't been doing them for the past couple of years? Because we are kind of in this weird space where we know we need new facilities, but I also recognize that there could be some. So I'm just kind of wondering because, you know, from, from our perspective, a lot of the projects can be pricey. So just kind of wondering if those, if they're out there or if there's some capital plans that we should be aware of.
Some of them will be back unfortunately in, in a couple of weeks probably to, to present our capital. And so some of them will, will be in there as one of the smaller ones.
Okay.
I think the big one was, you know, that we had been trying to postpone making a decision on the high school wall. That had been on capital for many years, but never really moved forward because of the fact that there was a hope that the high school would be built. So that now is dealt with and there's, there's no leaking in, in long high school anymore.
Great.
So that is wonderful. I think you will probably, if we are unsuccessful with the, an SOI in the future, we may end up coming back to capital with significant costs related to those windows because they really are, you know, those single pane windows just in this day and age is just.
Within the MSBA ARP, similar to the roofs, windows are mixed, are built in that too, that as well. So if we were looking at the high school not being a possibility, we would start to look at repairing things in portions, including filing an MSBA ARP grant for, for that, for the windows.
Yeah. And you'll see, to Mr. Alfred's point, we are, and we bring it forward, some of the exterior doors on the buildings definitely need to be dealt with. So we're going to probably put together a multi-year proposal to try to slowly eke away and get the most, you know, the most challenged doors dealt with sooner than later.
In addition, some auditorium lighting repairs that need to be done. What we sought with, within that quote was something that could, transferability, something that could move if need be, was a major selling point for, for us on, on our recent estimates that we received.
And then my, my next one is thinking about, you know, like as we go through this process, and we've been through it several times, is there a Plan B or is there another process or another thing? Because I know when I go out into the community, a lot of people ask me about it. I know I have a kindergartner, so I know it's going to impact me in, in, you know, at some point in the future too. But I definitely hear from people. I remember when I was getting my papers first signed in 2020 and I was, we're going around a neighborhood, you know, COVID, mind you, everybody said the same thing. It's like, what are you doing about a new high school? This is really important to us. And I think a lot of people have said that to me over the years. And I'm just kind of wondering, like, you know, we've gone through this process and I, I get it. It's a, you know, it's an expensive thing, but the longer we wait, like we, you know, when we talked about the DPW facility, we're talking about escalators that, you know, when we were looking at $500 a square foot, it's, you know, eight, $900 a square foot. And you're certainly seeing the same things in your realm. So I'm just kind of wondering, like, you know, what's the Plan B here or is there a Plan B?
Yeah, it's because that is the concern, right? The costs continue to rise. We don't have an actual estimate, but a ballpark that I was told by a couple of people could be up to $220 million. So the issue is, how do you fund $220 million if you don't get the potential 48% back or whatever it comes out to be when we finally get approved? I mean, now you're talking double the project. So in that sense, I certainly don't have a Plan B, but as a town, I think it's going to be something that the town will want to explore further and decide when is enough if, if we don't get before.
Can I jump in on that when you're done?
Yeah. I mean, I was actually going to bring up the, the Potential Fulfilling Committee, which I'm wondering if that's where you're looking at.
Yes, but first, before, and you can bring that one up. Thank you.
You're the chair.
You're the vice chair. I wanted to ask about, totally blanked on what it was. Nope, it was right there.
Well, you want me to just ask my other question while you think about it?
No, it's the feasibility, yes, but wait one minute. It's the feasibility study. So as I understand with the MSBA, if you're submitting an application like this, the town would, you would supersede it if you were to do a feasibility study of what does a school, what does an education system need to be at the high school? What do that?
Right, that's.
Supersede.
What I mean to say is if you do one.
Yep.
We can't get reimbursed for it.
We wouldn't be reimbursed for it, Ben, and if we did get into the program, they, they would require another one.
Right. That's my understanding.
It doesn't negate anything, right?
It was a little, if we.
Yeah, I thought there was something about that.
The way it was described to me is if you, if you do your own feasibility study, it almost implies that you're ready to move forward.
Yeah.
So it could actually weaken your chances. It's not definitive on that, but that, yes, it still wouldn't count if you did get moved forward, you'd still have to do another feasibility. It's, you know, it's a catch 22.
So I'll piggyback then on Ben's comment that I think he's about to raise is I wonder if that's a part of a Plan B, is that we're doing some sort of feasibility study. I just put that out on the table. Since you asked a question about Plan B, that's been a thought in my mind. But I know we're here tonight and we'll move to, to submit this application in just a moment, but go ahead, Ben.
Yeah. I mean, my last, my last point was thinking about, like, we had sort of brought up and maybe might get a little more formal with the new town managers, thinking about perhaps having something like a building committee. And we certainly had the working group with some of those kinds of things, but there's a lot of projects, there's a lot of things going on and having some kind of a group that can kind of parse through some of these things as, as we go through and planning and things like that and seeing if there's synergies across departments and things like that. You know, I throw it out there that I, you know, would want, obviously it's not, you know, our board, but it would, you know, we'd want to make sure that everybody was participating and had a, had a role. And, you know, you don't have to comment on it now because I'm just bringing it up right here, but just to sort of say, I think that is something that we might want to explore as a community, to be able to have some of those discussions and sort of start thinking about those long-term planning because some of these projects are getting very expensive. And, you know, we're talking about the library, we're talking about DPW, we're talking about the center, we're talking about high school, we're talking about a lot of different things. And these, these price tags are, are big and we need to sort of think about these things in holistic ways.
Obviously, forming a building committee is in, is in your purview, but certainly if that's a, a direction you'd want to go, we should, we'd be open to having discussions about, about.
Yeah, we want, I think, you know, we haven't talked about it formally, but we've sort of brought it up as a, as a potential. But thinking about it, you know, obviously we look for participation from, you know, all the interested stakeholders when it comes to buildings and things like that and throughout the town.
I would tag two things to that decision. One would be that we have a, a new town manager seated.
Yeah.
And some time under their belt. Not, not years, but maybe a couple of months.
A few months at least.
And that possibly is a part of that would be some sort of feasibility study because that would give a document, but those are just thoughts, just thoughts. So anything else?
I am all finished. Thank you. And I fully support. take my questions, not supporting, I'm just sort of, you know, there's definitely, like, you know, one of the things that I try to emphasize with the override is there's definitely populations of people who might not be as well-informed of what's going on in the schools on a regular basis, and they have kids that are growing up and things like that, so just making sure that they kind of understand what's going on, what this means and things like that, so, because they have a vested interest in the positive results.
I think the issue of needing the funds to offset, right, is significant, but then it also makes, it's like we're in limbo in the meantime, and that's the challenge, because you don't have a definitive timeline at that point.
If I just could on the feasibility study, we'll certainly open to looking into that and doing more research on whether it would have any impact on our SOIs. I would be reticent to go forward with funding a million or two, you know, one to two million dollars for a feasibility study before we funded the fixes to the plastique and villa roofs and the ram throughs. So I just, you know, we want to make sure that the water coming into our schools is stopped before we.
Sure, fair enough.
Seems reasonable.
If we have $2 million, then let's put it, you know, let's make sure the roofs don't.
Okay, you all set?
I'm all set.
I'll entertain a motion, please.
Madam Chair, move to submit the Holliston Public School SOI by deadline with the reviewed criteria as specified.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. I'll be looking for emails. Thank you for your patience and your time this evening. It's great to see you all, as always.
Thank you very much for your support, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
And maybe next week.
And then into.
It's just I can't, it's a signature trauma.
I know.
It's really awkward.
Thank you, thank you.
All righty, we will move on with our agenda to a consideration of a conservation restriction required for the trails at Jennings Hill subdivision. Kathleen, I'm going to ask you just to introduce this one.
Oh, sorry. Yes, I was just checking in with our intern.
Oh, yeah, do we need another moment?
No.
Well, I know it's a school night, and I just wonder if we need to pause in the meeting agenda for a moment. You all good?
No, we're all good. James would like to stay, so, I'm sure. Okay.
Great, all right. The jokes start coming later, so it'll be worth hanging in there.
They don't get, they get less funny.
Yeah, it's a nine o'clock hour.
Nine o'clock, they get less funny.
Okay, I can.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind introducing this, please.
Certainly.
The conservation restriction.
So on page five of your packets, it's a grant of a conservation restriction that requires a vote, and then signatures to the document at the end of the night with the clerk's materials. It has, it's a requirement, it's a conservation restriction requirement for the trails at Jennings Hill subdivision. It has been approved by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and approved by CONCOM, our Conservation Commission.
Okay.
So it's in relation to Danforth Drive LLC, and the request is that the select board would vote to approve this restriction.
If I may summarize, this is part of a development that's going in, they're transferring this conservation, or transferring this land with a conservation restriction to the town of Holliston.
Yes.
And this was discussed through the planning board as part of the conditions for permitting up there. Okay.
Thank you.
Do you know how long it took to get this conservation restriction? Do we know?
I do not know.
It's certainly been a year.
It's been at least a year.
I'm seeing 2023 dates here, so, okay, all right. Any questions about this, or do we need any more information, Ben and Damon, before we move to a vote?
I'm good.
It's good to see a process like this come to an end, because I know this is probably lengthy and somewhat complicated, and I think it serves a greater good here, so I'll entertain a motion, please.
And I always appreciate when the other boards or organizations that need to chime in have. That makes it a little easier for me to feel comfortable with the decision.
Madam Chair, I move to accept the conservation restriction requirements for the trails at Jennings Hill subdivision, Danforth Drive LLC, as presented.
Second the motion.
Motion a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
That carries. Thank you. Comments from the town and manager?
Thank you. I have a few updates. This will be part of a podcast, so I will read through it as smoothly as I can. We are working on our schedule, meeting schedule, to move through the votes for warrant articles and our budget. And looking at the schedule, I'm requesting to ask the board for additional dates that we could agree to meet on Monday, March 31st, and April 7th. It's adding two Mondays to our schedule. We can discuss it during other business at the end of the meeting, but just wanted to request that. Once we finalized our schedule in April, I'll be able to promote it tomorrow and promote it in the Town Manager Update online. And we will be voting our Level 3 budget, and then send that budget to the Finance Committee, which meets on Tuesday nights at 7:00 PM, and they will finalize their Level 4 budget. And the deadline for a completed warrant will be posted on April 23rd. So I'll have that presented to you at our next meeting, so that you'll be able to look at the schedule. And we are also going to talk a little bit more about the articles themselves in the next few weeks, and what's kind of come off, and what, some additional requests, including the request that the School Committee brought to us, that they're still discussing. They're going to make a final decision on Thursday of maybe two other items that they might ask in the CapEx article. So we'll be bringing that to you on the next meeting as well. I wanted to mention the public forum, which happened on this past Thursday. It generated a lot of questions. We're excited to see the participation, and we did a lot of listening, and we are working on a few of the requests that came out of last week's forum. The public had asked for the materials to be posted that the Weston and Sampson consultant used, and we have posted that on the website for projects. And after I finish presenting this, I'll just show the viewers how to find those links there on the Select Board page of the website. So we've posted that, and we were also asked to present a map that delineated the conservation and recreation areas, so we are working on that as well. So I just wanted the board to know that members of staff are listening and working on some of those requests, so we can bring those to you, to your discussion at the next meeting. We've also arranged to have James Keast, our Facilities Director, to come and attend your meetings to answer questions about either the DPW project or some of the other projects that are in the pipeline that you might have to think about and make final decisions on the budget with. So he will be available to you for those discussions. We will promote your upcoming meetings on Facebook and on the homepage under news, and we appreciate everyone sharing news, so Ben and I probably are thinking in the same way, that we have to continue to push out our news and ask our neighbors and residents and businesses to share that news. People can follow along by subscribing to receive the agenda via their email. So when I post the agenda, or the clerk posts the agenda, it generates an email. So you can subscribe to it, and then you'll know what that meeting coming up will be covering. The draft of the warrant is back from Town Council, so we finished writing it. It's been edited by Town Council, and I will share it at our next meeting. It reflects the town manager's balanced budget, which was presented on March 1st, and which both the Select Board and the Finance Committee already have for their review and discussion. And again, we'll just be looking a little bit closer at that, at priorities, and what the Select Board feels makes sense for Level 3. The deadline to post the warrant, as I mentioned, we're calling it Tuesday, April 22nd. And I will also be bringing forward dates that residents and the public can expect to get their postcard to attend town meeting, which is May 7th. So there'll be a lot of things coming up at the end of April that we can look forward to. So one item that came up was the clerk received a citizen's petition at the deadline, so I thought this would be a good opportunity for me just to present the petition that will be on the warrant. The petition is a firearm petition. It's a citizen's petition that was submitted to see if the town will vote to accept this proposed ordinance. "No person under the age of 18 shall discharge any rifle, shotgun, or handgun within the borders of the town of Holliston, except within an area designated for such purposes, or with consent of the Select Board, or with consent of the controlling government body thereof." So it is an interesting concept. I have submitted it to Town Council, who is reviewing it. He can certainly weigh in to town meeting, at town meeting, and certainly it'll probably inspire a lively conversation. And so I appreciate being able to present that. And then we received a letter of compliance from the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities to congratulate us on complying with our housing, 3A housing compliance. And so I just included that in your packet as well to look at. And as the Senate President was here, and thanked us for, yeah, and thanked us for all the work that went into that. And we did get a formal response this week. And that is my update.
Hey, any questions or comments for the town manager?
A comment, or maybe a thing to inquire about, when we were having the DPW conversation, I spoke briefly with our consultants, and they seemed to intimate that they had kind of a matrix, a visual matrix, of the different sites, kind of measured along various axes of, you know, points for like disruption to local traffic, disruptions to wildlife, et cetera. I think it'd be interesting to get that data and distill it visually, as a point of communication. I think that that kind of thing, it makes a lot more sense than poring through a 50-page document for a lot of people, just so they can get like a gist. That being said, we should probably take a look at it beforehand, and make sure that it's formatted in a useful way, so.
Thank you. And I welcome all of the board members and the public to continue to send me your questions as we go through the process.
Thank you.
And I could try to track them down.
Thank you, Kathleen, that's all.
Ben, all set?
Yeah, I'm all set.
All right, then we will move on to a consent agenda. We have a number of items within the consent agenda, one of which I will call out.
I thought Kathleen was going to show how to use the website to find a few things.
Oh, yeah.
I know we wanted to do that before we moved on to the next, because she was going to show how to subscribe, and then how to find the information of the DPW facility. Thanks for coming in.
Thanks so much for having me, guys.
You're welcome.
Good night, James.
Okay, and that was our intern. Okay, let me share my screen.
Do we have documents to sign by the way?
We have many documents.
Okay, so this is what the Select Board page looks like. I'm going to start from the homepage, so I'll click on the homepage. As you can see, you can see up here that there are departments, so if you need to reach anyone for help in departments, the next tab is Boards and Committees. So any board and committee that you want to follow, you can click on. So here, we're going to go to Select Board. So if you can see these up top, which you could also see on the homepage, there's a tab here called Subscribe. If we click on that, you can enter your email and confirm your email, and then you can click on a box and subscribe to anything. So for this, this is where the newsletter is, so it's news and announcements. We are only allowed to send to folks that are subscribed to that particular thing. So I cannot send the newsletter to anyone that's subscribed to the Select Board. It's just the law that we can only send you materials that you subscribe to. Some people have asked, so that would be Select Board, I'm registering for, I'm subscribing to the Select Board. I am not a robber, a robot, subscribe. Okay? And you can always unsubscribe here as well. So if I go back, I do want to show you one other thing to our Select Board page. We're trying to make this a little bit easier to find projects, instead of trying to find projects under a different tab. We're putting all of the projects on the Select Board website, and if you scroll down to the navigation on your left, these are the projects right here, Project Studies and Reports, and everything for the DPW feasibility study is here. So we just posted the materials from the site visit here, and then you can watch the Select Board meeting here. And on HCAT, they are putting together the video of the site, of the site visit, so when that becomes available, we'll provide that as well. They're integrating the slides from the materials that I sent them today, that we just got from Weston and Sampson. Okay?
Thank you, Kathleen.
You're welcome. And then in terms of the consent agenda, I just wanted to bring it to your attention that we're trying to keep a couple of the awards secret. Okay, so I think the note is there for our clerk that we want to keep.
Did you want to pull out for recognition, at least for a little bit of discussion, the block builders contract for Goodwill Park, where that is a major step for a major project that's been in the works for a number of years, and also has a major price tag, so it's probably worth just, I certainly can read it, but it is Block Builders for Goodwill Park project for the amount of $1,534,956.77. This is to start construction on a, I just don't remember the components of it at this point in time, because it went back and forth at town meeting.
Yes.
It's a major improvement project. It's a restroom, I know for sure.
Yes, and then a pavilion that they talked about last year, yes.
And some field upgrades.
And field upgrades. And that will be across from Nine Green Street, the municipal parking lot, just behind the downtown area where a super app is.
Do we know when the work is supposed to start and/or maybe finish? Do we have any information on that?
Um.
We might not.
James, I have.
Oh, is James here? We were invited to celebrate a ribbon cutting to, or a shovel in the ground.
Right.
In the first week in May, so that gives me some indication.
Oh, May, okay, thank you.
When it will start.
Got it, okay. All right, well then, with that said, that was the one I think we wanted to call out specifically. The rest of the items are listed on the agenda for the public to view, for the board to review. So it'll be a consent agenda to approve, approve in one motion, all of the items.
Madam Chair, move to approve all items on your agenda, item number eight as presented.
Second the motion.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, and then our last motion of the evening will be to approve minutes.
Madam Chair, move to approve the minutes of December 23, 2024, as presented. No changes.
Second the motion.
Motion a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
That carries. Okay, other business. I think we probably have a little bit here, so we'll take a minute. Damon?
Let me announce this.
It's up on the website, the parking ban during the winter.
I'll just, for anyone who really is interested in this, technically, the parking ban for winter continues to March 31st, just a week.
There were a few snowflakes out there today, but other business, Damon?
Pass for now.
Okay, done.
I think we were just going to talk about the schedule. I think I would like us to have some, a little bit of time to be able to go through the warrant and the budget. And, I mean, I understand there might not be 100%, but I think we can, there's certainly a lot of things that are, we can approve and move on from. And so I would just like, strongly like us to have that option. And then I would also request that we have the budget and the warrant on every meeting agenda until town meeting.
Sure, sure, until town meeting, okay.
Until town meeting.
So we have the two in April, the second and fourth are regularly scheduled in April. Then we would, our next meeting after that last in April would be town meeting. So we're looking tonight to consider March 31st.
Yes.
And April 7th, and then on April 11th, which pretty much covers us every week until, other than that interim week between Week 2 and 4 in April. Do I have that right? So is that a, are we feeling like that's enough time? So we're looking to add, well, one doesn't really count, in that it's going to purely be an agenda of interviews, so we'll take the 11th off. But we're looking then to add two additional dates, the 31st and the 7th of April, between now and town meeting. And I take your point about we need to get into more discussion and have more opportunities to discuss budget.
A little bit of space, a little bit of space to do that. And then, I mean, we could, you know, who knows, maybe the 31st, we get a lot of it done, and the 7th doesn't need to be there, we could cancel it, but.
We'll have to keep that one for Bernie.
Oh, for Bernie, yeah, okay, then that, yeah, that makes sense then.
But we can also do an hour meeting potentially, so.
That'd be nice.
So no issues then with the 31st or 7th at this point?
7th, I have to squint at, but I think I can pick it up.
Okay, all right, and then.
And we're saying the 11th for the interviews, we said 5 o'clock?
Correct, that's right, that's right.
Okay.
Okay. Is there, oh, I'm sorry, do you have any other?
No, that was, that was the main question.
Okay. I had one in terms of the budget. We went through the full-day budget hearings. I've shared with Kathleen some additional information I'm looking for from the budget presentations. I know we're waiting for some feedback on a town engineer position. Damon, I've seen you guys are in communication.
We're going to be talking soon, and I'm having some trouble hearing some cats, but I'm working on it.
Okay, all right. Well, we have about a month then, between now and closing the warrant for good and handing it off to the Finance Committee on April 22nd, 23rd, whatever that date is. So we have a month to wrap it up, which is a significant amount of time to get into detail.
I would, I would, I would like us to try to not slow walk that, try to expedite that as much as possible.
The budget?
And all of it. Because I think, you know, getting the information to the Finance Committee and to the residents as soon as possible is going to be helpful for people to be able to digest and understand what's going on and what we're about, and if we can, we can be having more discussions about the warrant and with the community, not just with ourselves.
Okay.
Because, you know, I think, you know, I certainly, there might be something that we have to wrap up. There might be things, you know, there's certainly some things that, you know, we need more information about, and I get that. But that doesn't mean, you know, 33 out of 36 articles can't be moved on as quickly as possible. So I'd like to, I'd like to make sure that we're moving, we're not, we're not waiting till the last minute to do it, as much as possible to complete it if possible.
I'm curious, just for some feedback, how are you feeling about taking things off? So I think it's important, I agree with you, to move things along. We know we have a lot of public interest, and it's probably growing after, you read the citizen petition, we know we'll have a lot of public interest in a number of articles. Getting them out there through our meetings to discuss, good. Removing them at a later date seems a much lower risk than adding them at a later date.
Right.
I think we're all the same.
I don't think we're, I don't think there's anything in there, I don't, as far as I know, I mean, unless there's something, you know, major, I think there might be some nuance. There's a couple of things that I've brought to Kathleen's attention that I think we should move in some, a couple of things around, and to do a couple of things, but we can have that discussion at a later date, but it's not about adding things, it's about clarifying a couple of things.
Okay, so we'll have budget warrant on the agenda next Monday. Post that agenda by the end of the week, and we'll be back at the table to discuss, okay, those two items and anything else. I agree, that's important. Any other business?
Just a note, I've sent this to Kathleen, I have narrowed down on language around the home rule petition, quote unquote. I have adopted a lot of the therefore language from Brookline. And just a point of clarification, the way they've phrased it may actually be helpful for our town as well, and might diffuse some of the worries people have. What that resolution does is ask the state to consider giving towns the ability to grant the vote to legal residents. So in other words, if that were to pass. So in other words, if that were to pass, and which again is very, very unlikely, because the state has shown zero appetite in doing so.
And we heard nothing tonight?
We heard nothing tonight.
Sure.
Then we would still need a town meeting to vote, to extend the vote, which I think is something a lot of people can get behind and is still like largely democratic. Now, on the other hand, I do think there are people who are gonna be like, no, we should push all the way, um, but again, I'm back on my half a sandwich is better than no sandwich, I think we're gonna get a lot of people behind this particular half sandwich.
Right.
But that's just my point of view at the moment.
We saw that with, uh, the changes to Chapter Ninety law that, that allowed towns the opportunity to adopt, um, twenty-five mile an hour town-wide speed limits and some other, some other changes as well, but so the legislature gave the, every municipality that ability and then you, you had to come back to town meeting or, or the Select Board, but in this case, you're saying come back to town meeting, yeah, that's, it's like a two-step process.
Bringing the needle a little bit, I, I will, I will point out that, um, in my advocacy and trying to understand this, I have reached out to a lot of folks across the split, the political spectrum. I've done my utmost to find people who I think are not agreeable to this particular idea, and I've been trying to synthesize that, I, I think there is common ground there on the idea of like, yes, that could be a municipal decision. And then it's like, but what is the municipal decision, that's where we start to maybe get into weird territory. But that being said, um, other, other municipalities have adopted this language, it adds to the weight at the legislative level.
Right, right.
Which is the whole point for them to allow us to make the decision for ourselves.
Okay.
So that's where I'm at right now.
Thank you very much for the update, any other business, Kathleen? Alright, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn at nine twelve PM.
Uh, so motioned.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries, we'll see you next Monday night.